I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners for October 14, 2019, to order. Let the record reflect that all Commissioners and Mayor are present, along with Town Clerk, Town Attorney, Town Manager, and Assistant Town Manager. I'll turn to the Manager for the Safety Minute this evening, Mr. Blodgett.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Board, we have started a tradition here since the Mayor's been elected to do a Safety Minute, part of the Duke philosophy, and it's a great philosophy. So, just please orient yourselves with the exits. There's, the stairs are back there in the right-hand corner, and there's another set of stairs at the very back. The suggestion is to move, if you're in your row, move your stuff underneath your chairs so that if somebody needs to get out, they can. We do have a defibrillator back there in the back, and we have the Police Chief here, so we know we're going to be safe. That's it. Be safe.
You good? Okay, good. The next is the invocation, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. For those who choose to share in a prayer, let us bow our heads. Dear God, you have said that where two or more are gathered in your name, that you will be with them. We ask you to be with us now, bless us, and provide guidance to the Matthews Town Council with the business brought before us tonight. May we prove worthy of the confidence placed in us by our fellow citizens. May we be honest in our actions and make the best decisions not only for today, but for years to come. We thank you for our civil liberties and freedom, for our privileges and opportunities. Freedom is not free, so please keep watch over the men and women in the military, police, and fire departments as they serve and protect all of us. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and you can see that a number of us up here have some level of pink on this evening, and I'd like to call upon our Police Chief to tell us about the Police Department's campaign for breast cancer awareness. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, Board, welcome. This year, the Police Department, as we did last year, will be selling T-shirts amongst our membership and to the public to raise awareness for breast cancer. They look similar to this. They're pink and blue. This year, they are in the blue. We still have a few of the pink ones left. The officers will be wearing these under their uniforms for the rest of the month, but they are for sale with the proceeds being donated to Novant's Mobile Mamography Bus. They go around and they serve communities or individuals that do not have the resources available to get a mammogram themselves, so they will do it at no cost. And last year, we did this. We donated approximately $1,300 to Novant, so we're hoping to match that this year. If not, they have assured us that every dollar will help.
So, where can they buy their shirt?
They can stop by the Police Department. They're located at the front desk, or ask any police officer around town, and they'll be able to bring them out to you. You may also see the officers wearing a pink band around their badge also, so just to bring awareness.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One thing I do want to add, I have a very close friend who, whose mother had breast cancer. Both his older sisters had breast cancer, and about seven years ago, he was diagnosed with breast cancer. So, this is not just a, an issue for the ladies in our community. It can happen to the men as well. Not as frequently, but it's also a possibility. So, please be aware of that. Mr. Manager, do we have any items to be added to the agenda?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is Public Comment, and we did not have anyone sign up for Public Comment this evening. So, I'll call on Mr. Camp next to recognize the Planning Board.
All right, good evening. Here on the first row, Looking Lonely, Pastor Larry Whitley. On the second row, Jonathan Clayton, Mike Rowan, Natasha Edwards, David Weezer, and Mike Foster.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Next on is Mr. Recess Regular Meeting for Public Hearing on Applications to Amend the UDO and Land Use Map of the Town of Matthews. Do we have a motion to go into Public Hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Urban, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are now in public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Board. The first item, 9A, is zoning application 2019-702 BAPS Charlotte to change the zoning from BD CD, BH CD, and I1 CD to RICD on two parcels, one at the corner of Mount Harmony Church Road and Independence Commerce Drive, and one at 2050 Independence Commerce Drive. Mr. Camp?
All right, well, of course, this is a continuance from our hearing last month. In the council memo, you will see some bullets, and I'll read those back for everyone, so you can hear what the updates have been since the hearing back in September. I'm going to be rather brief. I can take any questions you have, but just know that the applicant does have an updated presentation that's got a little bit more detail in some of the architectural drawings, so that'll be forthcoming from them. Regarding the modifications, we do have more details on the architectural drawings. They were included in the memo, and you'll see those in just a moment from the applicant. We have better detail on materials with a new list of materials that are included in the conditional notes. The driveway access points, so egress, ingress and egress on to Independence Commerce, it's really hard to see in this drawing, but it's been modified. There originally were three points of exit on the site. Particularly, there was a, sort of a convoluted driveway section here near the cul-de-sac. That's been modified to be a single entrance and exit here, and then an additional exit point remains here on Independence Commerce. So, did run this by our Town Engineer. She was more comfortable with this design. There is a new conditional note stating that an off-duty officer will be provided for events with more than 200 guests and attendants. To the same point, if there are more than 200 guests, the gate along Stevens Mill, as proposed, would remain open so the traffic can disperse more smoothly. Also noted, contractors will manage traffic flow on Independence Commerce to ensure that access is maintained to the business park just across the street, so that those properties are not blocked off from any construction traffic in the area. And again, those, those new conditional notes are part of the memo here, but that's really a general summary of the changes, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Camp? Any questions from the Planning and Zoning Board? Okay. Do we have any questions for the petitioner? Do we have, does a petitioner, would the petitioner like to come up and add any additional information?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, Planning Board members. Ty Schaefer, John Carmichael, we represent the applicant. We'll be brief. If I can get this to work. Going to go over two categories to talk about the work we've done since the hearing on September 9th. The first thing we're going to go over are changes that have been made connected to elevations and building materials. We've, the applicant's gotten some additional feedback and have made some additional changes, and so we'll let them discuss those with you all in the interest of efficiency. Maybe we'll take questions on the architectural matters at that time. And then we're going to talk about revisions that have been made to the site plan, and also some of the challenges connected to, in particular, the concerns that Mr. Martin and the neighboring Business Park had expressed regarding the use of Independence Commerce Drive block design. The engineers in the project will also have some materials to discuss with you all connected to that specifically, and then we'll take any questions you have at that time as well. All right, perfect, there we go. So, we'll let Collag Design talk about the elevations and the materials.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chris Scorsone. I'm with Collag Design. We are the architects working with BAPS. Thank you for letting us stand up here and answer questions and maybe give some insight as to the architecture. I'm going to move through, just for a moment, touching on the site plan. You'll notice that when we present the elevations, you'll always see north, south, east, and west. Sacred to the Hindu religion and many other religions as well, is this notion of approach from east to west, and so that's a guiding principle that affects both the site planning and the elevations as well. This is the south elevation, I'm sorry, the east elevation, which is the approach. The image at the top is the prayer hall, and it's an enlargement of the overall elevation which is, which is at the bottom. Namely, I want to go through materiality with you and speak of important precedents. You'll see some images to the top right that are in color. Those speak both to the architecture as well as the materiality. So, the top image, left-hand corner, is a BAPS temple in Long Island, New York. To the right is a BAPS temple in Atlanta, and the two images below are just characteristic of the materials that we are utilizing on this portion of the structure. So, namely, as we look at this enlarged elevation, you can see the leaders, and forgive us, the text is microscopic up there, but I'm going to describe the materials for you. From top to bottom, we are utilizing a material called GFRC, which looks like a carved ornate stone, which is basically a reinforced concrete product. That would be used in unison, well, as we go down the building, with both cut stone and ornamental cast stone. So, that's a mixture of natural stone and/or cast stone, which is basically a cement product. In the overall elevation lower, you can see the prayer hall to the left, and to the right is basically a series of assembly halls, a gymnasium, as well as some educational rooms and a kitchen as well. As we move to enlarged elevations, the top image shows, again, the educational wing, and basically, this is equivalent of, as I was growing up, going to Sunday School. The materials here are a combination of stucco textured architectural panel. You can see a precedent image to the top right. Again, that's a bit small, so I would urge you to perhaps follow up and look at that a little closer. Sitting in front of the glass wall system and the curtain wall system is a series of ornamental metal patterned screens. So, again, this is going to incorporate some of the religious motifs that are sacred to the Hindu religion. And again, the, the material to the bottom right is a, basically a stucco finish, and that's real stucco, not, not synthetic stucco. So, you can see that, that wing's placement in the overall south elevation below. We're now looking at the south elevation. Again, the top image is showing the side of the prayer hall. All of that materiality stays the same that we discussed in the first images with, again, with a combination of cast stone, GFRC, natural stone, and also along this elevation, you'll see inset areas of ornamental glazed tile. And again, for reference, you can see how that's keyed below. We're now looking at the north elevation. Again, similar materials, with the exception being, we are now showing a visible roof structure, and you can see the leader, and that is either a reel or synthetic slate. Our hope is that that would be a ceramic slate product on that one visible portion of the roof, and this is really the only roof per se that's visible, with the exception of the domes. And as we look at the north elevation, this is adjacent to, the larger area that you see in the center is actually a dining hall, but it's also a gymnasium. Again, more of the stucco finish and the ornamental metal screening, and you can see, again, the relative context of the rest of the, of the structure. This is our elevation buildings materials overview, and I had gone through all those materials with you. I do think that it's important to note that our intention is a, obviously, a very handsome structure that will withstand time and the ages, and basically have a material quality that would be very similar to a Hindu temple that you may have seen 50 or 100 years ago. I would urge that you look at some precedents that BAPS has constructed, namely, the BAPS Atlanta facility, and that's a very enjoyable Google search, and I think you can see the quality of the architecture, quality of materials, and just the overall handsome nature of the structures that they typically build, and we're really proud to be a part of it. And I'm here to take questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Urban?
Chris, thanks. First of all, I want to thank you and Ty and the group spending over an hour with me the other day going through these items. It's kind of a question to you and Jay Camp. We touched on the materiality of certain panels. You had, you had smooth metal panels in there. Is that going to pass muster with our ordinance?
Yes.
We're good? Okay. And just to, and the Board can feel free to ask any question once architecturally, but I did kind of run the gamut on mechanical units, where they're at, are they being hidden? Facades, parapets? We kind of walked around the entire building. We talked about the nature of the GFRC, which is basically, you know, form concrete panels, for the lack of a better word, so it's a very durable product. So, I, overall, I don't, I think it's a very pleasing building. You did a fine job, but I just wanted to make sure that, I know that there's some material aspects that we have in our ordinance, and I wanted to make sure that planning staff was comfortable with that. Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. I had some concerns that I shared with you via email recently. And of note, if we can go to 7G on the, some of the different conditions that you've changed the development standards, if we can go to 7G, it reads, "During construction and development of the site, the applicant shall instruct its construction contractors to manage and direct traffic on Independence Commerce Drive as necessary to maintain access to and from Independence Commerce Drive to the neighboring business district." I just would question, is that realistic? It's, it's not really measurable. It won't be supervised. Do we have any type of a guarantee that? It doesn't seem realistic to me, and I would, I, I think it's an important point.
Okay. I, I think, you know, we've all driven by construction where flaggers are on duty controlling traffic. I think that's, that's what the applicant envisions happening here. Maybe this is a good time to back up and go over more generally some of the other site plan changes, and also things, you know, the applicant met on the property with Mr. Martin. We walked his site, walked Independence Commerce Drive, and can discuss in some more detail what these note revisions were intended to do, and then also some additional steps that can be taken. Mr. Martin has been very forthcoming that, that he does not want to see any construction traffic on Independence Commerce Drive. That is a very difficult request to accommodate, given the topography for this site, and we'll let Block Design go over that in some more detail. Maybe we can have a discussion about that.
I'm told it's a 60-foot grade, and it would be much more difficult at the other side.
That's correct, and there's significant tree save commitment on the site along Mount Harmony Church Road that, you know, putting a drive off of that road is going to cost significant tree save because of the need to expand, to accommodate what that drive would look like. We can, can go into a little more detail. But I do want to add, just to clarify a couple of things in addition to what Jay had to say in his overview of the changes that have been made. The recent middle attempted to respond to two things. One are the staff comments regarding the site itself, and the other are the concerns that Mr. Martin had raised. As we discussed last time, I think those can be put into two buckets. One relates to the impact of post-completion regular operation of the site on Independence Commerce Drive, and the other category relates specifically to construction and the impact that will have on Independence Commerce Drive. The first change that has been made, Jay mentioned this, but hopefully, this side-by-side shows, shows it a little more clearly, is taking the entrance drive out of the cul-de-sac. One of the things that had the benefit of doing was removing the third exit point that was identified by staff as something they would like to see removed. We think that also responds to a concern that was raised about taking ordinary traffic through the cul-de-sac to enter the site, and a little less impact, hopefully, on neighbors and the, what are generally, you know, infrequent occasions when there is weekday use of the site and any material volume. Some of the notes changes, Jay had highlighted some of these. 7D is a commitment to keep the access point on Stevens Mill Road open for any event at which more than 200 guests are expected. Staff had asked that that commitment be made for any high-traffic-volume events. The applicant also included a note 7F committing to engage one off-duty police officer for any weekday events at which more than 200 guests are expected. I know that Mr. Martin and the neighboring park, their concerns, I think, about regular use of the site are really limited to weekdays, so that was an attempt to accommodate that concern. 7G, which Commissioner Miller mentioned, is a commitment to instruct the construction contractors to manage and direct traffic on Independence Commerce Drive. Mr. Martin's concern about blocking access to the neighboring park is entirely legitimate. The applicant understands that, sees this as a way to try to accommodate that concern during the construction period. A couple of additional things that the applicant has considered after meeting with Mr. Martin on the site, and that can be incorporated. One of the concerns that we discussed was the turning radius necessary to allow tractor-trailers to enter the lower drive on Independence Commerce Drive, and the applicant is going to run models and is going to commit to striping this side of Independence Commerce Drive, so there would be no on-street traffic that would interfere with trucks being able to get in and out of that lower drive. One of the other changes that they're willing to make to the notes is to, that their construction contractors will not use either of the drives for the neighboring park for any turnaround. That was one of the concerns that Mr. Martin had mentioned. Additionally, the applicant is willing to commit to repair damage that their construction contractors caused to Independence Commerce Drive. An additional concern that was raised was the condition of the road after construction, and that's something that the applicant is willing to do as well. All of those are presented generally as ways to mitigate a problem that really is difficult to fix. Prohibiting construction traffic on Independence Commerce Drive, we think is simply not possible, given the topography, and would also come at significant cost to tree save on the site. Colin Brock is here from Block Design and has, has a model he can show and answer any questions you have about that as well.
Good evening. I'm Colin Brock with, I'm managing partner of Block Design. I think Ty summarized most of everything fairly well, but I think one of the things we highlighted is the section off of looking at Mount Harmony Church Road is, as Ty had said, is a significant amount of topography on this site, running 60 feet from top to bottom, but even along this side of the section, as we're looking at a retaining wall that will be running down the entire length in order to accommodate the tree save of 15%. And so, coming into the site from those locations is going to eat into more tree save, which we're already at a minimum, just meeting the threshold of the 15%. And then we have a cross-section that kind of gives a little bit of depiction of how tall that wall is, and from a construction sequencing, you have the road bed, and then you have the wall, and then the elevation, and this being the tree save area right here, and then our replanted trees as we revegetate per the required ordinance. So, this kind of depicts having a truck being able to access that high of, on that part of the site would be a very difficult challenge. And that, that cross-section is fairly well emulated along this entire length, and obviously, as we go back, you get to this point. This will be your erosion control basin in the beginning of construction phasing, so this section through here obviously would not be able to accommodate that.
Have you or will you agree to consult with a town arborist when you're doing the tree replantings?
Absolutely, yeah. We'd be glad to talk to him. I think there's obviously a lot of collaboration we could have in talking about some, one of the things we had talked about internally is, this is, this is not really a mature tree stand of trees, and I think the revegetation opportunities that we may have in some pockets, although you can see there's not a significant amount of pockets available for revegetation, but certainly some opportunities, both on the canopy side of the internal trees required for the parking, but also any buffer revegetation options that may be available, to come back with something that's a little more desirable.
And in particular, we're looking for native species and exotics, so.
Sure.
Mr. Melton, do you have a question?
I do, Mayor, thank you. Have we confirmed whether Independence Commerce Drive is a private road or a part of the town street system?
It is a public road.
It is a public road.
It's a public road with approximately about 45 feet from edge of pavement to edge of pavement, so it's a fairly wide cross-section.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Urban?
Thanks, Colin, and again, thank you for spending, we've gone through this discussion for quite at length, and I think for the Board's consideration, yes, they can put a construction entrance elsewhere. The debate is, to Colin's point, tree save preservation versus the access. Granted, looking at the tree survey, the quality and the condition of the type of hardwoods that are out there, questionable, and I'd like to have Ralph go out there. We talked about that. So, you could have a construction entrance in a different place. It makes it a little bit more difficult for the contractor, yes, but I'm just lifting this up because it alleviates Mr. Martin's concern about the use of Independence Commerce Drive as a construction entrance. There's, here's the dilemma. You know, do you want to save that driveway access and be a good neighbor to Mr. Martin, and you're going to have to replant and do some different things? It's going to be a little bit more difficult, but then you have that tree save conversation. Or do you look at all possible means and methods along Independence Commerce Drive, which we talked about striping for, for the entrance there? And I also mentioned about, you know, some type of allowance or some type of dollar number in working with CJ about the cost of repairing Independence Commerce Drive after the traffic wears on it for quite considerable time. So, it's not that you can't have another construction entrance. It's the sort of, the debate of, what does that mean in light of this? Now, to dig a little bit further, you told me, correct me if I'm wrong, with the additional tree plantings, the island plantings, and stuff like that, you have 15% tree save, and you have about a 15% planting for a delta of about plus or minus 30% in tree canopy area.
Correct. Essentially, what we did is, we calculated a rough estimate, and we were fairly conservative. A typical mature tree can reach 40 feet in diameter. I think we used 30, maybe 35, I'll have to go back and look, but even at 30 and 35, or at 35, rather, if you took the area of that circle multiplied times each tree, plus the perimeter trees, that was the equivalent of almost two and a half acres, 2.25, I think, acres of canopy, albeit replanted, revegetated canopy. But in addition to the roughly 2.1, 2.2 of tree save to meet the 15% minimum.
Okay. So, I just want to be clear that, you know, we're talking about this, there are options. The question is, is, is there a palatable option? And I'd still like to have those conversations, like to hear from Roger about his thoughts on this, is that, yes, there are some other options. The question is, is the Board willing to sort of... The question is, is the board willing to sort of look at that, from that aspect of it? And granted, you see the difficulty of getting through that, the berm, the wall, the temporary construction easement. I will say, knowing that the nature of the construction, there's gonna be an issue initially because you won't be on-site. You will have to access the site from off the site until in which time you can get to a decent layout area to get equipment on-site. And so there's that rub, and Roger knows that, as being a builder from that aspect of it. So I just lift that up, and, you know, and obviously, you know, Colin and the group can probably talk to you more in-depth about that, but that's something to be considered. But I also want to make sure that we're, we're holding Roger harmless as best as possible and looking at his needs and wants too. So, you know, there's, there's a fine line here, and if we stay with the Independence Commerce Drive, I want him protected, I want that road protected, I want everything done we can from that aspect of it. If we go elsewhere, we have to realize that we're talking about that tree save area, and it would have to be replenished, obviously, from that aspect of it. So I think that discussion's still out there.
And one other quick point of clarification, just, you know, if you're imagining cutting a 20-foot wide swath through there, it doesn't necessarily work out that way. You're tying back slopes, so this could be 40, 50, 60 feet wide to tie that back, so it's not just cutting a narrow channel. But again, long-term, looking at the construction sequencing, you know, at some point, that wall's gotta be built. And so there's a, there's a time horizon where this can no longer be feasible as they continue to work on the building from a construction entrance standpoint, because the retaining wall and that phasing of the construction has to hold up dirt.
Correct, correct. I just, you're absolutely correct. Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Any questions from the planning and zoning board? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing continued from a month ago, and so we will open the floor to anyone who wants to speak in support or opposition to zoning application 2019-702. If you please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Roger Martin. I live at 2442 Bain Farm Road in Mint Hill, and I have about 70,000 square feet of existing commercial structures. Independence Commerce Drive on the right-hand side, and I want to say that the petitioner is correct. We've met, we've had pleasant conversations, there's no animosity between either of us, so I want to make that clear. My background is construction, and I've been at it for a long time. I'm one of those builders that don't exist pretty much anymore. That is, I'm hands-on, I'm in the trenches. So I've been in the mud, in the dirt, on top of buildings, et cetera, for a number of years. I'm not gonna tell you how many. So I understand how this thing is gonna go together. I want to again relate to you just what I said, the petitioner and I have no personality challenges or disagreements. I'm not in the, I am not opposed to rezoning this to religious use. I just simply know what is going to take place. Now, I'm gonna refer right back again to the fact that the petitioner and I have no animosity between us, but I have, to be honest, I have to tell you that since the original community meeting at the Country Inn and Suites just across the road from this project, I have gotten bits and pieces of the puzzle at different times. And those bits and pieces may not have changed any, but I get a teeny bit over here and a teeny bit over here, and you folks heard tonight for the first time that you're gonna have a significantly tall retaining wall, starting back at Stevens Mill Road and wrapping around the radius extent of the project. So you do have, and the reason you're doing that is going back to that 60-feet topo differential. They're going to hold back the hill in behind the building up close to Stevens Mill Road, and then as they get down, they're gonna have to fill that 10-plus feet. And so the retaining wall's purpose down there will be to retain that dirt up on the So, yes, you're gonna have a significant retaining wall. I would have to simply say, it's not the people who own buildings that I built, it's not the fault of tenants that that is going to take place because of that 60-foot topo. I'm sorry, folks, I keep getting it. The topo requires grading if you are going to build one building with a 90,000-square-foot footprint. You're gonna have several acres of property that's, that's gonna be graded. In addition to that, you're gonna have to grade your parking lots, the perimeter street in order to accommodate that 60-foot topo. So I would just simply have to say, it's not my fault that this building is being used for a 90,000-square-foot structure with the associated parking, et cetera. I think you do have a couple of additional opportunities for a construction entrance, one of those being the existing site that you see now. I think I heard Jay mention a few minutes ago that there'd been some discussion about moving or eliminating the driveway, egress driveway that is in the cul-de-sac. I kind of like that idea myself for a couple of reasons. Number one, if you're coming down Independence Commerce Drive, then you're not looking up the hill into a massive parking lot. The second reason I like that idea from the standpoint of traffic is that if, if you're dumping out traffic onto Independence Commerce, then the folks coming out the very rear egress drive in the cul-de-sac are going to pass by the folks that are coming out of the church facility out of the main entrance. So that person that is coming out of the main entrance is gonna be having to look hard-left over his left shoulder in order to see the folks that are coming out of that cul-de-sac entrance. So that's just a safety situation there. There is topo everywhere on this site. There's probably, and I haven't looked at it specifically, I know there's at least 10 feet of topo differential right where that proposed main entry is. So you've still got topo to deal with, and it's just a matter of where you're gonna be dealing with it at. The, okay, so if you move the drive that's in the end of the cul-de-sac and simply took it out the back corner, is this the? So if you move that driveway out of the cul-de-sac and put it right there, then that would put you directly off of Stevens Mill Road and into the back of the parking lot. And that, that, there is almost no tree save back there because if you were to look on one of those other sheets, and we can do that in a little bit, if you were to look on one of the other drawings, you would see a shadowy line where the Matthews Town Board gave the landowners, Lyndall Thompson and myself, by way of a rezoning here several years ago, five, six, eight years ago, I've lost track of time. Anyway, we went ahead and cut that road through there, so the trees are gone. There are no trees back there in that corner that you would have to be concerned about to a very large extent. Maybe a few, but not many. Very shallow. The topography back there is gonna be more level. You'll have a longer distance to be able to deal with that topography. The construction trucks could enter at that point and queue up on-site instead of queuing up on either Independence Commerce Drive or Mount Harmony Church Road. They could stop at that point, and a concrete truck, for instance, is gonna stop on the site. The driver's gonna get out, he knows he's gonna pour concrete, he goes around, he takes his chutes off, he places them on the truck, and that's a five-minute, eight-minute process if he's being speedy about it. So those concrete truck drivers could do all of that back there actually on the site in the parking lot. Tractor trailer truck, instead of trying to come to Independence Commerce Drive and navigate that 90-degree turn up the topography onto the site, would not have that issue then. He would have a flat site that he could enter onto, stop, get his chains off, get his binders off, and be clear going into the site. I haven't heard in any of the, I had not heard in any of the meetings, any fact other than the fact that, or it was never stated one way or the other, is this a one-phase project, a multiple-phase project? So even tonight, I haven't heard that information. However, petitioner's architect did tell me last week when we met on-site that this would be more than a one-phase project, and it could be, these are his words, again, I'm not being ugly, I'm just repeating what was stated, this could, it could be 10 to 15 years before the second phase of this project took place. So that leads me to ask, is all of the grading going to be done now? Or is all of the parking lot gonna be graded? Is it all gonna be paved? So my two big issues are, number one, construction entrance. I was on-site a couple of Saturdays ago, and the North Carolina Turnpike Authority had bog paving lined up to do some final paving, tying in Independence Commerce Drive to the service road. So they show up with paving trucks, pickup trucks, dump trucks with asphalt on them, ended up with probably eight or 10 asphalt trucks there, and they basically took over Independence Commerce Drive. So they're sitting there waiting on, waiting in the queue, waiting for the guy on the paving machine to call them and say, okay, this truck's empty, y'all come on up here now. So that's exactly what will be happening with the concrete trucks or other trucks that come on-site, is they're, they're gonna stop on Independence Commerce Drive, they're gonna line up, and the superintendent's gonna yell at them by walkie-talkie and say, okay, truck three, you can come in now. You've been sitting in the queue for 10 minutes, five minutes, 25 minutes, but now you can come on the project. So with pores, concrete pores as large as what could take place here, then you could have five, six, eight concrete trucks, 10 concrete trucks sitting somewhere on Independence Commerce Drive or Mount Harmony Church Road. If you had that back entry for construction entrance, then those trucks could be queuing up on-site instead of the roadway. It's gonna be a greater, well, it's not gonna be really any greater distance. You're gonna put stone on it at some point anyway, so why not let it be a construction entrance? Assuming that this project is a phased project, then due to the confines and limitations of that site, it's gonna take a contractor with a little bit of smarts to figure out how not to destroy the rest of the site in order to continue building the phase that they're working on. So I guess I could probably go on for a while, but you see that there are some valid concerns here. My last thing that I haven't talked about, the petitioner and I did talk about construction worker, personal car parking, excess truck parking, construction equipment parking, et cetera, like that. All of that needs to be on-site too. We did talk about some alternatives for where those folks could park, one of which is Bill Ingram's property that fronts on Highway 74 or the Monroe bypass, right against the hotel, Country Inn and Suites. Second location is I have two undeveloped, unbuilt-on lots, and I told the petitioner that I was open to discussing them parking there. That's probably gonna be an inconvenience for subcontractors because they can't be walking 500 feet back and forth for a hammer and a, and a 2x4. This petition has kind of moved pretty fast, it moved pretty fast here in these meetings that we've had, the previous one and this one, and all I'm trying to do is say, you know, slow down, this thing's got more, more legs than, than you realized just to start with. So I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in support or opposition to application 2019-702? Anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, at this time, the petitioner does have an opportunity to provide feedback to the board.
Thank you, and I want to make sure to echo everything that Mr. Martin said. I'm very pleased that he's been willing to meet with us, continue those conversations, been nothing but amicable, and I expect we'll continue to have those conversations. I think his comments outline really the dilemma that the petitioner is facing. This site certainly has its challenges, they are more than aware of that, but they're a member of the Matthews community and they want to stay in Matthews, and this is a site that would accommodate their long-term commitment to being here. So notwithstanding those challenges, this is a site that they want to try to work with. And so the question becomes, Independence Commerce Drive, which is a public drive, which is the furthest access point from any residential use around the site, which does make a rational access point for construction traffic, how do we utilize that but also protect the very legitimate concerns that the neighboring park have about access? Some of the concerns that have been expressed, I think in particular about the permanent egress at the top of the cul-de-sac, we would submit that that, that's a weekend issue. And so we don't believe that will have any impact on the neighboring business park if that is used by worshippers when they're leaving the site during Sunday's, Sunday services. Using Stevens Mill, I think, creates its own issues because that's, that's where the residences are located near this site. So that would be a cost to consider of driving construction traffic by single-family homes. I do want to clarify one thing about the phasing because I, I think maybe we weren't as clear as we should have been in explaining what that phasing was when we spoke with Mr. Martin. The second phase would involve, you know, relatively modest additions to the building to accommodate growth down the road, but would be triggered by being able to eventually acquire the holdout parcel that's carved out from the site. The, if I am correct, the, the temple has a right-of-first offer on that property when the current resident is no longer there. So it's, you know, 10 to 15 years down the road, that's an estimate based on when that might possibly become an option for them to accomplish. might possibly become an option for them to acquire. You know, having that now, as we discussed at the last hearing, would solve a lot of these issues, but unfortunately, that's just not the situation the applicant's in today. So happy to answer any additional questions, but thank you for your time tonight.
Mr. Urban.
Why don't we have Colin walk us through that? Because I was thinking on the southwesternly corner, but why not in that northeasterly corner if Mr. Martin is accurate in his statement that the topo is relatively flat in that location?
It is somewhat accurate, but to his point in terms of things kind of coming in piecemeal, I'll speak to that. Obviously, this process always is an evolution. Part of that evolution's going through the stormwater management component, and that stormwater management requires us to grade it. So as we start working through a site, we start with some early initial stages of grading, and then as we dive in a little bit further, obviously, is the applicant's investment and our fees to pay us to grade these sites is very expensive. So after we get that initial blush, we start to grade it, we get a little bit deeper and a little bit deeper as we are, as we're here now. Part of that is, this is a significant cut-fill exercise. And so although it is flat right now, it is also a significant amount of fall as it goes to that second basin here. What we are trying to avoid right now is, again, going back to the tree save, we do have tree save areas that we've identified, but more than likely, some of our initial grading studies had a low wall here. So we had also another about three to four-foot drop. So it would come in and drop because we'd be cutting this in order to fill this. So again, as we're still going through those grading exercises, cut-fill, this is a challenge because this, this site all goes this way and it starts to fade this way. So it is flat now, but it will not be in the future. And then we've also got this easement that we have grading limitations in from a utility easement.
Okay, because I guess, I mean, I like every option, obviously, explored because that's the realm of design is to study that. And even if there's a hybrid scenario that looks at through, with through discussions with a contractor about the phasing of an opening, positioning equipment and moving to a different opening, I think that would be worthwhile to explore. You know, I'm familiar with that site, drive by it quite frequently, and I guess I'd really need to sort of walk it and get inside there and see what the topographic issues are and how challenging it might be. But, you know, I, I know what construction can do. I know that the fact that Independence Commerce Drive doesn't go through creates a problem with vehicular traffic getting in and out. And I know we can accommodate Mr. Martin and his folks somewhat. The question is if there's other opportunities, we should be exploring those. I mean, that's the bottom line. It's interesting because this has almost become like an urban site, not a rural site because you're sort of pigeon-dinned, whole between a lot of different constraints. So I hope you'll continue to talk to Roger, maybe working with our Public Works Director as well, to sort of continue to explore those options. I think you're moving in the right direction, but I want to make sure because he's absolutely right, a 90,000-square-foot pore, it's going to have to take a couple of pores, but you're going to have all those trucks lined up, the whole nine yards. Now, it's an inconvenience for a short period of time.
Sure.
But still, it's an inconvenience.
I think for, I think our position, the team's position is, this is, obviously, we all know this is a major connector road. This is, I guess we'd designate as an arterial road, technically.
Yeah.
This is a two-lane, very narrow, two-lane road that connects all the way back to Stallings. This is a much more heavily trafficked, I would guess significantly more trips generated. And as you were saying, in that period in time where you're stacking up trucks, people come around this curve and there's, you know, staging happening here, trying to get into the site, just seems like not as good of an option. And also having to drive wherever they're going to connect, either they're going to come all the way back around and go down the new intersection and come all the way back around, so you're traveling more and more on public roads and doing more damage to public infrastructure. It just seems like it doesn't make as much sense from the town of Matthews standpoint of safety and security as well, of having that access. And again, mitigating more trees to accommodate that. And then from an exit standpoint, also, you know, way more traffic coming out here versus, again, as Ty pointed out, this is not a typical church model that we're used to, an elevation kind of scenario where 700 people, 700 cars are flowing out at 10:30 in the morning. This is a all-day, come-as-you-want scenario. So this is not a flood of people on a Sunday coming out that we typically see in most religious communities.
And I'm not, I'm not concerned about the Sunday weekend attributes of it. I'm really worried about, in talking to the architect, this is a two-year endeavor, plus or minus.
Correct.
And so I want to make sure that we're vetting all the possible options, even to the point, even if along Independence Commerce Drive, that street tree line there or whatever, you cut in 10 or 15 feet, tear up that curb and gutter or whatever, and you make a staging lane to get out of his street would be, you know, and then you work your way off the site and go from there. I'm, you're a creative guy, I know you're a creative guy. And so I'm looking for those options from that aspect of it.
Okay.
Mr. Query.
Yes. I hadn't thought about what Roger brought up about coming off the other road either, but since that's not that large a tree save area, why wouldn't it be better to go ahead and grade in there and actually fix you a staging area on your own property instead of having to use the public roads? The staging doesn't have to be on public roads, you could grade something in there where you could stage those trucks on the property or on the site.
When you, I'm making sure we're clarifying on staging. Staging from a sense of, we anticipate that staging will happen on site once you get through initial clearing, which is a 30 to maybe 45-day process, weather given. I guess maybe another terminology would be stacking in terms of if you had, when it's concrete day and you've got trucks stacking here, not necessarily staging and getting onto the site versus staging on a less busy road of trying to get ready to get on site. Maybe, I'm not sure we're using our right.
Why couldn't they stack on the site?
Well, they certainly could stack on the site, but they're getting, they're getting off. Either way, you're slowly, everybody's coming in at the same time or however that's going to be organized.
I think you're missing a point. I'm talking about going ahead and coming off the main road and stacking and staging on site instead of using the public road for that purpose. I mean, I know if the way you've got it, that's about the only thing they can do. But I would like, before you come back to us, take a good, hard look at opening that other road also from up there and using that for your entrance to the construction site along with the, you might use both of them as far as that goes. But I think, I think you need to definitely look at, because looking at it, I can see the tree save area is not that, not that large. Most of it looks like it's what y'all are going to put back in after you finish grading it. So in my opinion, I, for, I would want to approve this. I think that needs to be looked at about keeping the construction work on site. You've got a large parking lot, you could bring it in there. I know it takes a little extra grading, but I think that's something that you need to take a hard look at before you ask me to vote on it.
Okay, will do. Mr. Men.
Thank you. I would just like to say, in part of looking at that, let's, some things that you all have mentioned, too, residential areas are closer to the other roads and more civilian traffic. And I think that's very, very critical for us to consider when you're talking about big trucks and construction equipment coming and entering off of those streets versus a cul-de-sac. So I like Commissioner Urban's thought of maybe making another lane on Independence Commerce Drive, which is a cul-de-sac, is not going to interfere as much with the residential areas or the civilian, I don't call it, which is not really the right word, but non-construction traffic, everyday traffic on those main roads. I think that would be a much safer and less intrusive to the entire community because there are more people around than just Independence Commerce. So I think we've got to look at the entire community, and that extra stacking lane may be the way to go about it.
Yeah, I think our team generally concurs. This is a much less intrusive zone versus the access here, is what we mentioned earlier. We agree.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much. So this particular zoning application will go to the Planning and Zoning Board at their meeting on October 22nd, and will be available to come back to this board on November the Mr. Query.
Question. Instead of going to them, would it be possible to hold this over again and see if they can come back with some more information on access before we actually do that?
If you would like to make that motion.
Yeah. I reckon petitioners who will need to ask the question then, can, do y'all think by the time Planning Board has, y'all will have something along those lines? Or do you think it would be wise to give you a few more weeks to come back and give us your opinion? Because that means when you come back from the Planning Board, it's locked in pretty much, and it'll be an up or down vote.
That's correct. We can commit to exploring these issues before the Planning Board hearing.
Before the Planning Board.
Correct.
You don't want to, you don't want to.
That's correct.
Next Tuesday. You don't want an extension?
No, the applicant would like to proceed. The applicant would prefer to proceed on the current schedule.
That's still a good note.
The applicant would prefer to proceed on the current, current schedule.
That's, that's a long gamble.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is 9B, motion 2019-4, text change to the UDO code text regarding lodging facilities. Mr. Camp.
All right, so over the last year or two, councils had numerous discussions about lodging in town, particularly extended stay. Staff has drafted a couple of, several changes to the UDO. So I ask you to bear with me, text changes are not exciting, there's no fun site plans or architectural drawings, so if you're not interested, just sit back and relax. So there's a couple of things we're doing here with the aim. First of all, we did not have definitions for lodging, so we've added definitions to the code. Second, we've amended the table of uses to specify where hotels and extended stays can be located. Finally, we've updated the prescribed, prescribed conditions for those particular uses. And I'm going to go through these, the sort of those three basic portions. We can stop and discuss each of these if you'd like, or I can go through it all and you ask me questions at the end, it doesn't really matter. Under definitions, again, we've applied a definition for a hotel, which is generally a lodging establishment for 30 days or less. There may be dining areas, kitchens, meeting rooms, ballrooms. One of the distinguishing factors is that hotels do not have full kitchens. They may have, so if you think of places you've stayed, it may be a Hilton or Marriott, there may be a mini fridge in the structure, but there's typically not cooking appliances such as stoves, ovens, dishwashers for cleaning of dishes, et cetera. So these are meant to be short-term accommodations that you're not really cooking in. For extended stay hotels, this would be an establishment where more than 10% of the guest rooms have kitchen appliances such as stoves, cooktops, ovens, et cetera. They are advertised, designed, and utilized for daily or weekly occupancy exceeding 30 days. There may also be some of the similar amenities that are accessories, such as ballrooms or meeting rooms. Notably, we did not add a definition for Airbnb's, short-term lodging. That hasn't been an issue yet as of yet at Matthews. I don't think we've risen to Asheville levels of tourism. We would love to be a tourism hotspot, but unless the board directs us, we did not include short-term rentals in these changes. Here in the table of uses, so we're on to part two now, we've removed the motel and hotel nomenclature. I don't think people refer to lodging as motel much anymore. Replacing that, we have, of course, the hotels and extended stay hotels. Here are the zoning districts, these two types of establishments would be allowed for a standard hotel, and there's two pages here, so bear with me. Prescribed conditions, HUC B1, B3, extended stay, B3, and B3 is the town's high-rise district. We think that's an appropriate place in our parallel traditional districts for these establishments. On the following page here, these are our conditional districts, and you can see that hotels and extended stay would all be allowed in our mixed-use transit service, B1 shopping center, and ENT district. So those are generally the places we are proposing for hotels to be located in. Again, just another change is removing the motels on this page as well. That's going to be throughout the entire table of uses. And finally, we had some, some very antiquated prescribed conditions. I really don't know the genesis of these. I think it was maybe to allow a place like Family Dollar to have like corporate lodging in part, an office district, not really sure why some of this language was here. Couldn't really draw any connections that we really needed it. So we've removed that and added new prescribed conditions for hotels. You'll note here, numbers one through eight, and we took this from our B1 SED district, so 50% of each facade would be brick, masonry, or other stone. Daily housekeeping should be included with the standard roommate for hotels. And also created some standards for common open spaces within the facility, so 2,000 feet of lobby space, 3,000 feet of interior meeting space, amenity space. And that's a pretty long list of things, could be pools, fitness centers, business centers, or other guest-use areas. Hotels have a cap of 30 consecutive days of living in the same room. Extended stays would have a cap of 60 days. Finally, outside storage or permanent vehicular equipment parking is not allowed. And on applicability, if the, if an existing establishment is expanded by more than 10%, they'd have to bring the establishment into compliance with these standards. So I know that was kind of really fast, but that's the angle we've taken to kind of get us into the 21st century on hotels. I see, and I see a bunch of hands going up here.
Mr. Urban.
Jay, item number four, number five under B, 2,000 and 3,000, 2,000 square feet is actually a little bit larger than this room. How did you derive, where did these numbers come from, or how did you derive these numbers?
So I found something, doing some research on this, I found a cut sheet for potential franchisees for Hampton Ends. These seem to be pretty standard numbers for, for the, I would say, the typical new hotel being built in an area like Matthews today, looking at.
So, well, the lobby space is probably fine because they break it up into a little cyber cafe and do a lot of neat stuff. But, so what happens if someone puts in a pool and a really large, you know, concrete space around it and calls that their 3,000-square-foot of, do you have to have, I guess, let me clarify, do you have to have all the boxes checked, meaning in 3,000 square feet, you need to have interior meeting space? Or how does that work? Or can they just do a big pool with a big concrete surround around it and say, that's my 3,000 square feet?
So I did contemplate that. That's 3,000 feet of interior space, so the room.
So we're talking about an indoor pool?
That would be an indoor, that would be, that could be considered part of the
Okay.
interior space. So that, there's sort of a à la carte, you know, different uses you could employ inside the building to meet that standard.
Okay, so, so that's where you're saying a combination thereof, so it's really an interior pool, many states may include an interior swimming pool.
Yeah, business center, fitness center.
I mean, the numbers you've generated obviously are really limiting the type of product because of those square footage numbers. I mean, you realize that if you pulled a Hampton up, that's probably why.
Right, right. We're looking at the, again, the standard construction we're seeing. Obviously, if a boutique hotel came downtown, if it was more constrained, these numbers could be difficult to achieve, but.
What mechanism is there to do that, then? If a boutique hotel came to downtown, what would you, did they ask for administrative amendment, or how would you address that?
In that case, probably a zoning variance if they couldn't meet that. But again, if you think about meeting space, most hotels see that as an additional revenue stream. Very common to have a few thousand square feet of small meeting space. We did not think 3,000 square feet was too difficult of a standard to achieve.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Men.
Jay, one question I have is allowing extended stay in the entertainment district. We've already had some issues with one that was built by Wright at the entertainment district, so I guess I'm concerned about keeping that as a possibility in the entertainment district.
Sure, so we could obviously remove it. Extended stays is a really popular style of lodging today. I mean, there's a lot of really great operators out there, and given the nature of the sportsplex, staff felt that that was a good style of hotel to continue to allow. that that was a, a good style of hotel to continue to allow, provided that we have these conditions in place that ensure that it's a, a facility that's built to a good standard.
I would just say for the record, I still have a concern about that.
Okay.
I think the major people who are going to be coming to the sportsplex are going to be staying families for weekends, or maybe a week if it's a heavy tournament time or something like that with their children, and I think experience has shown with extended stay hotels of 30 to 60 days, it's going to create clientele that necessarily, wouldn't necessarily be comfortable for a family and their children to stay.
Thank you.
I would, I would prefer for that to be removed.
Mr. Higdon.
Yes, Jay, what, what is the enforcement mechanism for the residency requirement? Do we have the police going by and asking to see records of how long someone stayed in a room?
That's a good question, so some communities do require record-keeping, which I think is pretty standard, I mean, obviously, hotel change, you're going to have record of who's in the hotel, but I think this is a, it's probably similar to us, making sure we don't exceed our occupancy standard for this built, this room that we're in, it's on that back wall, but we probably don't sit there and count, but that the establishment should know what these requirements are and should let guests know. They should have a mechanism so they can't book more than 30 or 60 days at one time. It would not preclude someone from moving from one room to room, but at the same time.
So what's the point?
Yeah, other communities have seen people live in hotels for years at a time.
Right.
And in a way, they've become almost an affordable housing solution for some, some folks.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to raise the bar a little bit. I, I agree with Commissioner Demant that we don't need an extended stay in the entertainment district, so I would strike that. What we do need in the entertainment district, speaking alone, because I'm going to do the definition of lodging, B5, right there, a minimum of 3,000 square feet, I had this in my notes, and it's parallel with Commissioner Urban. We've already read it, but if our goal is to provide meeting rooms and/or banquet facilities, I'd like to suggest we raise that number. The swimming pool, in my notes, could take up much of that 3,000 square foot stated amount, what about 3,000 of meeting space and 3,000 of other amenity à la carte? Because in my opinion, the goal is to have meeting rooms and banquet, banquet facilities in a hotel in Matthews so that corporate meetings, team meetings, award banquets, luncheons, things like that can be held, and we lack that right now. We don't lack extended stay hotels, and if we need another one, Independence Boulevard would be fine. But I would, I would strike extended stay from the entertainment district, and under the definition of lodging, 5B, I would like to suggest that we, we make that 3,000 square feet of meeting space and 3,000 of other amenity to reach the goal of meeting rooms and/or banquet facilities. Please.
Mr. Melton.
Thank you, Mayor. In, in the spirit of Commissioner Miller's question, Jay, I've raised the idea before of having a full-service hotel in a convention center, not on the scale that Concord has, but on somewhat of a smaller scale. How would item five, items four and five, impact that if we have a, a smaller convention center bolted on to the, the full-service hotel? Would we have to revisit this and make that change? And the second part of that question, would someone looking to bring that type of product to Matthews see this and say, we're not what they're looking for, and it may scare away something that we really are looking for?
So you're saying hypothetically, a freestanding, small convention center, and then a hotel is built adjacent to it, would they still have to meet these standards?
Correct, like the, like the John Q Hammond's property in, in Concord, the Embassy Suites, that convention center is, while a separate structure by code, it's still, for all intents and purposes, one building. Would this impact that type of scenario in a negative way?
I think we'd have to look at that, that's a very specific, probably a one-off item, one-offs again, or, we don't lean on zoning variances very often, but I would think we would only ever have one convention facility in the town if we ever have one, so I think we'd probably be looking at some version of, some either text change or zoning variance to, you know, maybe allow somebody to do a five or six-story hotel without the meeting space, knowing that the convention center is serving that need on the same property.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Querry.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Miller that I think the 3,000, just for interior meeting space is not enough. I think that needs to be brought forward, or can, or either controlled as far as how much can be an interior pool or that type thing versus a meeting room. I think that maybe we need to break that up a little bit on that. The, I think that, I don't think that's nearly, nearly enough there, so just my two cents worth on that, too.
Good. Mr. Urban.
I guess, I don't mind a discussion about the extended stay, but I think it would be nice if there could be a little educational process for this board across the whole, because when, when you think, I just pulled it up, if you think of Marriott, Marriott has extended stay programs, and they have 30 different brands basically of hotel types, and so we could be dismissing a very good brand because we're trying to increase the number over here, left or right, and there's so many different levels of hotel accommodations, I think we'd just end up stereotyping extended stay and not realizing that there's, you know, extended stay for the businessman, there's an extended stay for the family, they're all directed at different venues, and I know the fact of, you know, putting up the grandkids at Myrtle Beach for a week or whatever, everybody goes for the extended stay aspect of it. So it would be nice if, in this process, I think you've done a great job of starting this, and there's, there's nothing wrong with it at this stage in game, we know we can modify it, but I think it would be nice, and I don't know if it's a conversation with Mohamed Jenidin, or somebody like Murray at the SCRVA or whatever, they may have a source that can come to the table and say, folks, here's the various brands, here's who they are, and here's what they provide and offer, so you can get a sense of the wealth and breadth and depth of hotel types of accommodations, and you may realize that it's okay to be at these numbers, or maybe you tweak it in some form or fashion, because it's kind of, really is hard to say extended stay and sort of isolating them, when the reality is there are just so many brands out there, you know, Courtyard, Fairfield, you know, they're under Marriott flag alone, so I just caution knee-jerk reaction until we sort of really understand the marketplace, my thought.
Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to comment on the, out of respect to the board about the minimums should be higher there on number five, I think the potential, I think everybody would like to see some kind of convention center or something with a lot more meeting space in it, but if you raise the minimum, if you're not careful, you're just going to run off potential hotels to our community, just because the market won't support it, and convention centers are money-losing operations, and many times, they are subsidized by the local government, depending on the square footage, so I just want to caution the board, I think we all want to see more meeting space, if you get the minimums too high, I think you could chase away potential hotels to our town.
Mr. Higgin.
Yeah, I, I think we all, to add on to what Commissioner Urban said, we have kind of a feeling for, we know we're talking about the extended type, extended stay type hotels that we don't like, but I'm reminded that in a previous employer, I used to travel to Elkhart, Indiana quite often, and I stayed in a residence inn that was an extended stay, was extremely nice, it was a lot of businessmen, people brought kids there, and as a father of two kids that played a lot of sports where you're traveling somewhere for a week, you can really save some money if you can, you know, cook breakfast or make a sandwich in your room, so, yeah, I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Urban, I think we need to not throw out the baby with the bathwater, we know what we mean, we don't want the really low-end extended stay hotels that are essentially affordable housing or whatever, or being used in that manner, but we perhaps would like to have a, something like a residence inn possibly in the entertainment district or near the sportsplex to allow families a less expensive option to stay here. So I don't have any way to massage this, but I think we need to look at it some more because we could be excluding some, some properties that we might want.
So I'll, I'll add to this discussion, on the hotel and extended stay, I stayed in Embassy Suites last week, it was a 450-square-foot suite, but it would have fallen under the definition of a hotel because it did not have the cooking facilities, it had a, you know, a seating area, there was a sofa, chair, separate bedroom, but it was a mini fridge and a microwave, were really, and a small sink were the only sort of kitchen facilities that were provided, so it's, it's not a one or the other option here, I think there are a lot of those, the 30 Marriott brands or numerous Hilton brands that have a extended stay model that does not have cooking facilities as part of it, so it's not always, you're not necessarily excluding them with these requirements, so just wanted to point that out, too.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Higdon, how do you, how do you quote-unquote police that Marriott versus Marriott Garden Suites versus Hilton, something else?
A lot of it's done by price point, you know, if you're getting a hotel room for $19 a night.
No, but if, if it's, if it's zoned for an extended stay, at what point do we intervene and say, we don't like Holiday Inn?
Well, I, I think we have to massage the, this verbiage to get the type of product that we want.
All right.
And I don't have a recommendation for that off the top of my head, but I, I think it can be done.
And again, if our goal is to have meeting rooms and banquet facilities, 3,000 square feet for dedicated meeting rooms is not too much.
Agreed.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Planning and Zoning Board?
I like to say, all of your questions, very valuable, one thing that all of us, all of us understand, we need some meeting rooms, and what we need a conference room where we can bank this, and build this nice entertainment center here, no question for them to have a banquet after the celebration, and I think that's more important than meeting rooms, because most banquet rooms can be sectioned off to meeting rooms if they're not having a banquet. So I think all of you are on point, I understand about extended stay, I think we've got a bad taste in our mouth on extended stay, but as John Urban says, we, we can look at that, there are some extended stays that can be afforded, and still we can stand to that.
Anyone else on the Planning and Zoning Board? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Camp. Now we're at the portion of the public input on motion 2019-4, is there anyone who would like to speak in support or opposition to the motion 2019-4? Anyone who would like to speak in support or opposition? Okay, seen none. Jay, you've gotten a lot of feedback from the board, given that the planning and zoning meeting is in a week. I think there were some good ideas about reaching out to some of the other municipalities to see what, what they do and how they address this. It seems to me it might be practical to continue this public hearing until November 11th so that Mr. Camp can get further information for us, and it sounds like it could change enough that continued public input would be important.
Sure.
So would anyone like to make such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Mint, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Higdon. Any discussion? Okay, seen none, all those in favor, all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, so this motion 2019-4 will come back to us on November 11th with the public hearing continued. Okay, do we have a motion to reconvene the regular meeting?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Melton, seconded by Commissioner Urban. Any discussion? All those in favor, all those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the planning and development business, received report from the Planning and Zoning Board. David?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I have the Planning Board report from our September 24th meeting, we had three items on it for the board's action. Item one, zoning application 2019-699 BH to ENT 1364 Matthews, Mint Hill Road, Brigham. Our board voted unanimously to recommend approval for the ENT early designation finding, the plans consistent with Matthews land use plan and reasonable as it would help develop the long-planned entertainment district. Item two is zoning application 2019-700 I-1 to L-1 CD Light Industrial Conditional, 433 East John Street, Strong Haven. Our board voted to recommend approval for the zoning application with conditions that the decision to move the loading dock and unloading dock from East John Street to Charles Street, and the condition that there is a full agreement on the list of allowable uses. Members found the request to be consistent with Matthews land use plan as it provides better access to the property, eliminating traffic congestion on East John Street, and allows proper redevelopment in accordance with established town plans. Our motion was recommended and approved unanimously. Our last item was zoning application 2019-701 R-20 Residential and B1 CD Neighborhood Business Conditional II Residential Institutional Conditional R-I-C-D 515 Matthews Township Parkway, 10-812 Monroe Road, Warner Park, Covenant Day School. Our board voted unanimously to approve the zoning application, recommendation was conditional on the applicant be able to work with, work out with suitable noise state, noise.
Abatement.
Abatement. Glasses aren't working. Agreement with surrounding property owners. Members found the proposed zoning change to be reasonable because it allowed current use to remain in place, enhanced participant experiences, provided a cushion between commercial uses along Monroe Road and residential neighborhoods, and addition of potential multi, multi-use path. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions for David? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is planning and zoning-related actions. The first one, item B1, is zoning application 2019-699 Brigham Property, changed the zoning from BH to ENT on that property of 1364 Matthews, Mint Hill Road, and being identified as tax parcel 2015-081-07. Do we, Mr. Camp?
Yes, a brief update, since Planning Board's recommendation, the applicant has proposed just an additional sentence here, this is the conditional language on the site plan for early designation, what the applicant's representative, Mr. Henderson, has added here in parentheses, specifically to include limitations and additional requirements regarding lodging uses as the Matthews Council may hereafter adopt, so this is just a, a reference to the language we just spent a considerable amount of time discussing, that they would adhere to those requirements, so that's the only additional information I have for you. We do recommend approval of this, as is consistent with the small area plan for the ENT district.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Mr. Miller?
I'll make a motion that we approve rezoning application 2019-699, in that it is consistent with the Matthews land use plan, it allows uses that are envisioned in the entertainment small area plan, and will facilitate the development of the long-planned entertainment district, and that it is reasonable in that the rezoning is reasonable because it establishes the entertainment zoning on a parcel within the boundaries of the entertainment small area plan, and provides the property owner with a broad list of uses that may one day be. plan and provides the property owner with a broad list of uses that may one day be developed at the site, especially if it has banquet rooms and meeting space.
Motion been made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Urban. Any, Mr. Melton?
Just point of clarification, Mayor. Does that motion need to include the added statement in Jay's memo dated October 8th? Or by default, does it already include that?
That's a valid point. I think it would be prudent to add that in. Mr. Miller?
It's already on the site plan as well.
We can include it as it says specifically to include limitations and additional requirements regarding lodging uses as the Matthews Town Council may hereafter adopt. So I'm totally comfortable with that.
Okay.
This is fine by me.
Okay. All right. So motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seen none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item is zoning application 2019 dash 700 Strong Haven. That's to change zoning from I-1 to I-1 CD. Excuse me, on that certain property designated as 433 East John Street and being further identified as tax parcel 2015 dash 014 dash 06. Mr. Camp?
So not a smooth sailing here. The applicant has requested deferral. They are still working through site plan solutions for the relocation of the truck traffic off John Street. Obviously, this is a very important item for all of us here in town. So staff does support the deferral request to November 11th.
Mr. Higdon?
To make a motion to defer application 2019 dash 700 to November 11th, 2019, to give the applicant additional time to complete study of the truck dock relocation.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tim Higdon, seconded by Commissioner Queer. Any discussion? Mr. Mint?
I'd just like to share an experience that I had a week ago today. Went to a doctor's appointment in Valentine, coming back to work 4:85 to get off on the John Street exit. And I had to wade through a traffic, entire traffic cycle to even barely get on to John Street. And then I had to pull in the full right-hand lane so that I wasn't blocking the intersection. I was concerned there'd been a bad accident, but there was no accident at all. It was all from a tractor trailer truck at Strong Haven. So I know I've heard about that day in and day out, but it was, it surprised me that it was that significant of a backup. So really am glad that they came in with the deferral so that they can work on fixing that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And that zoning application will come back to us on November the 11th.
Designated.
Next item is zoning application 2019 dash 701 Covenant Day School to change the zoning from R-20 and B-1 CD to R-I-C-D on those certain parcels designated as 515 Matthews Township Parkway and 10-812 Monroe Road and being further identified as tax parcel 213 dash 012 dash 01 and 17. Mary Jo?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Since the Planning Board and public hearing, the applicant has revised, made some revisions to the site plan, and I will briefly go over those. So they have added an addition of approximately 200 feet of trees along this area for noise abatement and a approximately 300-foot long brick wall between their asphalt driveway and the softball field here. And it'll be approximately 10 feet in tall height. And that, again, is for noise abatement for the neighbors. They have also included the driveway connection to the Liberty Commerce property that will be gated, but there is going to be a connection there as requested. And they have noted under note 5 point B, under parking and access, they have updated specifying the limit of access through the site from Monroe Road. Again, we have that circled on the notes, which is going to be hard to see. But it talks about the different times that access will be allowed to go through from one side, either from the north, from the 51 side over to Monroe Road, or vice versa through the park. Those are limited to emergency uses for ambulance in case the road gets blocked one or the other by a bad accident, and that the only ingress and egress is through the other entrance. They have also noted, added a conditional note stating that sporting events will not be hosted on Sundays or before 9:00 AM on Saturdays except for extenuating circumstances. And they have also stated that they will continue to work with the town in the future for a multi-use path at the facility.
Mary Jo, what is, what are extenuating circumstances and who makes that determination?
It's a good question, Mayor. I would assume one of the extenuating circumstances would be rain. Say it rained Friday night for the football and they need to have it sometime on Saturday. They would also be maybe a tournament. That would be the only thing that I could think of. I think it would be a better ask of the applicant.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Colin Brown on behalf of Covenant Day School. It's a good question, but I think Mary Jo is right with the answer. We just wanted to have some relief valve just in case. Imagine if there was a major tournament in town on Saturday and it did not complete. If teams had traveled, we'd like there to be the option to have the makeup game if necessary on Sunday. But we wanted something in there to assure you and the neighbors that this is not something that would happen on a regular basis.
Okay. Do you think we could add to that note and advisement of the surrounding neighbors?
That would be an interesting note.
I mean, if you're going to change the circumstances.
Our preference would probably be to coordinate with the zoning administrator to give you some assurance this is not happening repeatedly.
Okay. All right. While you're up here, were you working on some noise abatement issues today or doing some measurements?
We haven't. I believe that, I believe town staff visited the site last week, and I think Mary Jo can tell you about their report.
Okay.
I can tell you the Covenant team had little consulting engineers to the site today to do noise testing. And one of the things that, that was verified, they were verifying the sound of the PA systems, and they're significantly lower than the town's limit. The town's limit is 55 decibels. The PA systems were significantly below that. However, they did some additional work on the site and are prepared to make two additional modifications to the location of the speakers that I think will reduce noise even greater, directed in the right direction. So one of those, and we have a preliminary report, the next one will come. But what Covenant is committed to do is, and now I'm paraphrasing here, but by elevating the main speaker above the concession stand, the way it's located now, the saddle reverber, the sound reverberates off the railings and roof. They believe that modifying its location will result in approximately a four-decibel reduction in noise impact to the neighbors. So that's one commitment that will be made. And that is regarding the football and soccer field PA system. Secondly, with regard to the baseball field PA system, again, they're, they're significantly lower than the threshold. But the modification there would be, would be to remove the current speakers and mount them on poles behind home plate facing the spectators. This would still give ambient noise to the fields, but would drastically reduce the decibel levels on the Loop Road. That's the road that's closest. So though we've verified the noise levels are below, and we're adding the sound wall behind the neighbors' homes, we can make those two changes, and Covenant will make those immediately as soon as possible. And so we'll commit to those changes.
So are you making that part of the commitment?
Yes, sir. We just got that memo today, but happy to make that on the record and insert those changes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Higdon?
One surprising comment, and I've spoke to you about this on the phone, from some of the adjoining neighbors was cowbell noise. Would you be willing to agree to a prohibition of the use of cowbells during, during games?
We've, we've talked with the Covenant staff. They are not aware of proliferation of cowbells. However, we.
Did that Will Ferrell in there playing?
Well, one of the engineers earlier, Colin Brock, is a Mississippi State alum. I am an Ole Miss alum, and we find nothing more offensive than cowbells. And so talking with the Covenant team today, they're, they're happy to put that prohibition, put it in writing. And so I think our commitment would be, we would post notice that those are prohibited. If an opponent sneaks in with a cowbell now and then, that may happen. They will do their best to police that. But we can make that a commitment in the zoning, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
I have two questions. The first, maybe for Colin, if we could also put in air horn. I think air horns are louder than cowbells. So maybe we, we could annoy those.
Some air horns are used to start and stop events for lacrosse and other games. However, I think we would be fine putting that prohibition on fans ringing them in saying it's a cowbell.
Yeah, that's good. And for Mary Jo, under your bullet points in the memo, the fourth bullet says note V period B under parking and access has been updated. What is VB?
It's the note under here on the, on the page. It's five B.
All right, and that?
That references the emergency use of the access.
My best guess was vapor barrier.
Thank you.
Mr. Urban?
First of all, Colin, I'd like to thank you after our meeting, and you, again, reached back out to the neighbors, monitoring all the emails, going back and forth. And some of the neighbors responded that they liked the direction you were going in. And I think the fact is that you're going to be there and you're making these improvements is greatly appreciated from that aspect of it. I do like to get a little clarification, and maybe it's more from Mary Jo. This Covenant Day Church will continue to work with the town on proposed multi-use path. Sounds a little loosey-goosey to me. So how do we get the terminology where we have it, that it's in the rezoning package, and then we get some, something locked down in the future? How do, how do we tighten this up a little bit? This is to continue to work with. It could be five years, 10 years, 20 years?
That's a good question. Staff is still not sure where the location, where the board is most comfortable with the location. So if you would like to have this, I don't know what the finance portion is going to be either as to who's going to pay what. And I don't believe that the parks and rec have any funds in the upcoming years. So if you want to maybe put a note in there that we come back in two years that staff addresses us to make sure that, you know, we're moving somewhere with it, or if it's some benchmark out, out there to be set.
And I guess I would go to Charlie. How do we, can we place in, say, six months from execution and rezoning, there'll be a deliverable? Or how can we assure there's some, there's teeth here with discussion of this multi-use path?
Well, you could say that, but I don't know what kind of teeth you would have to that. And that's the problem. And.
If I may, the issue there, we're, we're kind of caught with a little bit of a political football here of where the town and the board and others think the trail ought to be located. The school's open to working with both. I think clearly willing to offer a dedication. But it sounds like there's some larger decisions to be made about where it goes and who that impacts.
I just don't want it to just fall off the edge of the table and completely disappear.
We understand.
Not sure how you would enforce the existing terminology, but at the same time, that may be all we have right now to keep it alive for future negotiation on this. What discussion?
I think we need a note. The neighbors that are along the back are not enthused about the, the greenway going back there. And I think it would be important, though, to have at least the area along the fence closest to Monroe Road designated as a future greenway potential. That would still connect up with the areas that we've put behind the buildings that have gone up along Monroe Road. And it gives us something for future greenway.
Well, they do, they do have a note on there. It says, reserved for future 10-foot path over there. It's right here. This is a section.
Yeah, my computer's not, not behaving. Okay.
I'm just looking for the, two years down the road, and it's sort of the classic school syndrome. We don't know anything about that. What are you talking about? But does that note not cover that?
Well, it just says, we'll continue to work with the town on proposed multi-use path.
But the, but the.
Yeah, I see what you're saying there.
Has it as if it's being reserved, or you could change it to dedicated or reserved? The same thing almost.
And to be clear, our initial, we initially showed it at that location because that's where the adopted plan came. There was an ask from staff that it be in another location, and that's where things got away from us a little bit. So this has always been our way, and we're happy to stick with that.
Mr. Mint?
I would just say I don't want that to get away from us either. My preferred route would be exactly where that is. So if the note could designate that it's being dedicated, can we do that?
Have to be a plan.
Reserve for future.
It says, reserve for future multi-use path to be provided by the Town of Matthews, is what it says. Is that right?
So that means we pay for it.
That's what I'm getting at.
I would strike by the town.
And.
Yeah, you could just simply say, as Mr. Miller's just pointing out, reserve for future and not say anything else.
To leave negotiations open.
Well, you just, just say nothing else.
Okay. And then the other thing I just wanted to add is living close to Christ Covenant and Covenant Day School, I do feel that that is a jewel in our community. The students that go there have graduated from there. The parents are involved in that town, and the contributions you've made to the children of Matthews and elsewhere that attend that school are so admirable. And I live very close to Elizabeth Lane Elementary, and I know it's a very different noise pattern, but I live directly behind their playground, and they do have, you know, some different league practices right behind me. And maybe I'm an outlier, but I love hearing the happy sounds of kids participating in sports and being outdoors and being coached and mentored and not always inside playing video games or doing things that are not appropriate. So thank you for being in our town and producing the students that you have produced.
Mr. Miller? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Really?
Really?
I was trying to come up with something.
Really?
I was going to try and bolt this together and make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve zoning application 2019-701 as most currently submitted, including the notes on Mary Jo's memo to us dated October 7th, 2019, to also include the two items from the observation and testing today with the relocation and modification of the speakers, to also include the prohibition of cowbells and air horns, with the exception of during the lacrosse games when necessary for the execution of those games. And to also strike the words to be provided by the Town of Matthews per current area plan.
Second.
Because it is consistent with the Matthews land use plan by further developing an existing athletic field with additional seating, appropriate parking, addition of noise buffers, and future multi-use path for recreational purposes. And it's reasonable because the zoning allows current recreational use to remain in place and continue providing a buffer between commercial uses along Monroe Road and residential neighborhoods.
Second. Last of seconds.
Lots of seconds.
Lots of seconds.
You're good, Chris.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Melton, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Any other discussion? Mr. Urban, did you have additional?
No, I just wanted to make sure that, that on Chris's motion, it was to elevate the main speaker and modify its location for that four dB reduction at the football soccer field, and you were talking about the remove and remount of the speakers on to poles of the softball fields. That's what, that's specifically what you're talking about.
That's right. We'll make it a little more clear once we get the report, but those are, those are the two issues.
And I'll defer to Mary Jo to make sure she's satisfied with the language of my motion.
We'll, we'll make sure we get revised plans, and then the clerk will sign off on those.
I just wanted to make a comment to Covenant and especially Mr. Brown of the efforts that you folks have put forth to work through this. I think it's been great. Colin, you came out to the neighborhood and talked to the neighbors, had the opportunity to stand and listen and hear the concerns, and I think that was very productive, so certainly appreciate all your efforts. Okay? Any other comments, questions? Mr. Urban?
And finally, I don't know if the general public's here or not like that, but they have every right to call the police department when they feel that there's a noise violation, you know, and, and get them out there. Don't just assume it's rezoning, just puts it in place. There's the chief right there, call him from that aspect of it. I mean, you know, there might be a lot of cowbells that could sneak in one evening.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is 11, excuse me, let's jump here. 11B4A, which is motion 2019-2. This is to change the zoning from I-1 to R-12 on the parcel designated as 433 East John Street. We deferred that earlier in the meeting. Staff's recommendation is that defer that for an additional month. Do we have a motion?
Just one motion for all three of them.
Well, the other two are going to be, we've got to address those two.
Well, I would address them only when you can deal with all of them, because they put it under one motion.
Okay.
Even though they're separately listed, it's still motion 2019-2.
Okay. So, seeing that, obviously, the tax parcel 2015-8107, we would either, I guess likely, withdraw that, and then also the other BH to R-15 on 2015-081-29. But we need that as one motion to defer until such time as we can sort all of that out?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Melton?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to defer, sorry. Motion to defer decision on zoning motion 2019-2 until our next planning and zoning meeting in this room held November 11th, 2019.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, and motion made by Commissioner Melton, seconded by Commissioner Urban. Any discussion? Mr. Miller?
If my recollection serves me well, which it often doesn't, this started, I thought last October, although it wouldn't have to think to 2019-2, but I thought it started in October with the overlay districts, and we've been deferring it and discussing it for reasons I've tried to make obvious since then. It just, it, you know, I've been up here for 12 years, and this, this little project here confuses me more than anything we've dealt with. I wish we could just separate all three parcels, refile them. I'm not sure why it was done this way, but let's go ahead and defer it then.
Mr. Melton?
Thank you, Mayor. Point of clarification, if we deny this next November 11th, does that mean that we or the applicant cannot bring this forward for another year, or can we initiate the zoning?
You're the applicant.
We are the applicant, okay. Thank you.
You can bring it back every single meeting if, if it's so desired the board to do that, and I don't mean to be facetious, but that just, you have legislative authority if, to deal with it as often as you want.
Well, to, to that point, Mr. Buckley, if, if we deny this, how does it impact the previous zoning?
Has no application whatsoever to the, the one dealing with the Briggmans?
Yes, sir.
That's your zoning on that nap.
Okay.
So, this has no application unless you adopted it subsequent to that, this, then this becomes the zoning.
And, and to that point, I'm, I'm with Jeff, Commissioner Miller, I, the longer this goes out, the more confused I get. Can we hold, and I'm seeing a lot of head nodding, can we hold a, a 5:30 or schedule special meetings individually and, and help sort this out? Because right now, honest to God, I would, wouldn't have any idea what we're voting on, I'm so confused.
One thing you could do, you could direct staff under motion 2019-2 to recommend withdrawal of those items that have been taken care of already, so that be on the agenda and would be clear to the public what, what you're doing.
And those items would be B and C?
Let's correct.
So, may I amend my motion?
Well, I think if you just direct staff to do it.
Direct staff to do it. I don't have to amend the motion.
You know, you, we will, we will be prepared to the November 11th to deal with all three of them.
Okay, all right.
Well, I don't mean to speak for Hazen, but that's, I think that's what Hazen would have said.
So, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Query?
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with what's been said. We keep putting this off, and the, to listen to what Commissioner DeMint said, how long are we going to put this off and let people have to fight with that out there on John Street?
I think that when, when we started this, we put this motion 2019-2 in place, and then Strong Haven came in with a application for rezoning, and the Briggman property came in for an application for rezoning. So, the decision was made to continue the deferral until such time as we worked out those particular rezonings. So, tonight, the Briggman property was rezoned, and staff has recommended on the other parcel on Briggman Road, which is a bowling alley, that that be withdrawn. And so, what Mr. Buckley's saying is all three of those need to be taken care of at one time. So, until A is, is addressed, we deferred the Strong Haven zoning, and they'll be coming back November 11th.
I, I do understand, I understand that. I was just wanting to make a statement that this one has been deferred over and over again. I think time's run out on it, that we need to, to bring it back and, and go forward instead of keep on deferring it.
So, so here's the dilemma with Commissioner Query as I see it. So, A is really the only one we're talking about, which is John Street, and so we could, the board could go ahead and take action and rezone this to R-12. So, then what you have is a non-conforming situation, and they could just not do anything. So, what we're trying to do is leverage, kind of work with them to get this, what we really want is trucks off of, off of John Street, and if we, I know it's frustrating, right, and in hindsight, we should have separated these two so B and C could be taken care of because technically B and C are over with, but A, we, you guys could do it, and in theory it would take care of it, but it wouldn't get where you want to go, which is actually the trucks off of East John Street. And so, that's why we keep trying to work with them, and, you know, they, they need to ru, fix it. They need to get those trucks off of East John.
Okay. I understand.
Mr. Miller?
I agree that we need to get them off of John Street and onto Charles, but for example, in the deferral request we got, they're continuing to pursue the landscape plan for, it seems like an odd way of re, rebuilding a loading dock to the rear. It's more than a landscape plan. Do they have this under full grasp? Has nothing to do with landscape. It's a matter of having a four-foot loading dock in the rear instead of the front.
That's what we call our site plan. It's a landscape plan approval where we, we look at all of the required setbacks.
Well, they sure are moving slowly. Handle it however you want. My comments were about the grouping of the three and the amount of time it's taken.
Mr. Buckley, couldn't we bring back two of the three at the next meeting and put them on the agenda so we, we address at the next board meeting, B and C? Instead of deferring out 30 days, we defer it out till the next meeting, B and C?
Correct.
So, that's one option, if that makes anybody feel better.
We just called a question. We've got a, a motion and a second.
Mr. Melton had his hand up.
I just want, one more quick item. The discussion around Matthews Elementary a couple of years, years ago, for the past couple of years, involving their queuing line on South Trade Street, we directed in some form or fashion the police department to not allow traffic to stop on South Trade Street. Parents stop in that queuing line, move on, keep going. This is creating a safety hazard. Can we not ask the chief to, at some point, if it's noticed that traffic is impeded or a, a safety issue is present, they look over to that truck driver and say, "You got to Fire truck came through there, ambulance came through there, emergency responders came through there, and they couldn't get through. Bad things happen. I realize we want to work with them, but if you're backing up traffic from Strong Haven back to 485, you're causing us a safety hazard that could impact life safety. Move on.
Okay. You want a response?
Yes. I mean, is, is, is that an option, Chief? Before the chief answers, I, I guess I would say, Mr. Buckley, this has been going on for 40 years, I don't know how many years, 40 years, and is there an arbitrary issue if we all of a sudden start popping them with tickets, you know, beginning October 15th?
I guess there's some kind of argument about selective enforcement, but I'm not sure that that applies. I don't know how to answer that, to be quite frank.
Well, I, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how to answer it either. I mean, this is a, I think it's kind of putting us in a, in awkward position that zoning has allowed this, this ramp or this loading dock to be there for so long, and now it comes to the point where the police department must make them move. We have directed police officers in that beat, should they see a traffic issue, they intervene. If that means assisting that truck to get out of the road as quickly as possible or to move on, that's what they do. We are not directing selective enforcement or whatever term you want to use to actually enforce the violation of blocking that street in the hopes that we're able to work with this company to get this long-term resolution fixed. Just, you know, telling them to move on is not, in my mind, going to fix the entire issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We ready to vote?
Can we repeat the motion?
Motion is to defer. November 11th. Yep. Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Interestingly enough, I would not have chosen that to be the long-term discussion item tonight. Okay, next item is 12A. You have minutes from the Matthews Committee on Education. Next item is consent agenda, items A through G. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve consent, items A through G.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Higgin, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 14, unfinished business, there is no any, there is no unfinished business. Item 15 is new business, and the first item is consider expansion of coal tar sealant ban. Mecklenburg County Environmental Supervisor Olivia Edwards. But, there you are, okay. I saw Rusty.
Got me a whole crowd, little posse. Oh, awesome. Okay, thank you. So, my name's Olivia Edwards, and I have Jason Hunt and Rusty Rozell with me, and we're with Charlotte Mecklenburg Stormwater Services, and we're just going to give you a brief presentation as a review on the existing Town of Matthews coal tar sealant ban as well as a proposed amendment to that ban. So, if you recall, the Town of Matthews has a coal tar sealant ban that is found in your surface water pollution control ordinance. The coal tar sealant ban became effective in March of 2018, which prohibits the use and sale of coal tar sealants in the town's jurisdiction. To date, we've had one notice of violation that's been issued, and we did not issue fines associated with that violation. So, just a quick little refresher on PAHs and their relationship with coal tar sealants. If you recall, PAHs stand for polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, and they're formed from the incomplete combustion when you heat or burn organic material. The USCPA has designated 16 PAH compounds as priority pollutants, with six of those being designated as probable carcinogens and one being designated as a known carcinogen. So, coal tar sealants contain high concentrations of PAHs. Additionally, coal tar sealants have been identified as one of the primary sources of PAHs in the urban environment. Additionally, there is a tremendous amount of research that is out there relating to how PAHs are harmful to both human health and aquatic life. Now, in the seal coat industry, there have been predominantly two classes of seal coat. There is asphalt-based sealant and coal tar-based sealant. An asphalt-based sealant is a viable alternative to coal tar sealant in both quality and cost with the additional benefit that it contains very low concentrations of PAHs. So, the problem that we're encountering on a national level is that there are new seal coat products that are entering the market that are non-coal tar-based sealants and non-asphalt-based sealants, and many of these new products contain high levels of PAHs. And so, the issue we're try, we were trying to address with the coal tar sealant ban was to reduce PAHs in the environment, and these newer products containing high concentrations of PAHs would not be prohibited under the current ban. So, our recommendation or solution would be to expand the limit of the current coal tar sealant ban to include any sealant products that contain PAHs greater than 0.1% by weight. And the rationale behind this is that currently there are many available products on the market that contain PAH concentrations well below 0.1%. In addition, the European Union has classified road waste that contains...